Good evening. Good evening and welcome. I am Kathy Thompson, President of the Red Clay School Board, School District Board of Education. The Board is thankful you have all come out tonight, grateful to have you here, and wants to hear from you. The May 13th, 2020 Regular Session of the Red Clay School Board Meeting is called to order. It's 7:09 PM. This meeting is being held electronically. On March 12th, 2020, Governor Carney issued a declaration of a state of emergency for the state of Delaware due to a public health threat. The state of emergency allows all public meetings of executive branch, public bodies, including the Boards of Education, to be conducted electronically, either by means of telephone conference or video conference call. The information regarding this meeting, including information on how to access the meeting electronically, was published on May 6, 2020, on the Red Clay School District site under the Public Notices section. Individuals may participate in this meeting via Zoom conference. Individuals may speak by completing the public comment form available on the Public Notices section and submitting it by 6:30 PM prior to the start of the meeting. This is the second time we have held an electronic board meeting using Zoom, and we thank you for your continued support and patience as we work through this process and these details. As a courtesy to others and to prevent unnecessary disruption, we ask that while your devices will be muted, unless you're allowed to speak, you've put in a comment to speak in public session, and then you will be unmuted. Individuals who are not members of the Board will be muted during the meeting and unmuted if they have submitted a notice to speak during public conference. In order to maximize the effectiveness and orderliness of this meeting, we ask the following: We will have a roll call vote for each item to be voted on. During items submitted by the Board or Board discussion, we ask that Board members indicate they have questions or comments so that we can order everybody, one person speaking at a time. Each Board member should identify themselves by name prior to speaking. The meeting is being recorded, and school Board members should leave theirselves unmuted because otherwise it's too difficult to unmute you prior to speaking. So with that, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And the flag is up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States-
States of America-
And to the Republic-
Public-
Which stands-
Stands-
One Nation-
One Nation-
Under God-
Under God-
Individual-
Individual-
With-
Liberty-
And Justice-
Just for All.
Thank you. Alright, so thank you, everybody, for attending, and thank you again to all the district employees, every single employee in the district for all that you're doing during this pandemic time. We do recognize it, and we thank you for it, everyone from the educators, to the ins, to the bus drivers, to the therapists, to all, you know, every nutrition workers, the administrators, and the list just keeps going on. Thank you very much. So we have an agenda, and is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Dr. Bohm moved. Is there a sec?
Second.
Mr. Casper seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Well, let's take a, I think we have to take a roll call vote. Sorry about that. Maria, are you there?
Kathy?
Yes.
This is Adriana. Can someone please send Jose the Zoom link? I can't figure out how to send it to him.
I can right now.
I did send it to him.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maria, I can't hear you about the roll call vote.
Can you hear me now?
I can now, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
I think he's trying to get on.
Yes, he's trying to get on, so he's not available.
And Dr. Newton needs to be unmuted.
Dr. Newton?
Please unmute her.
He's unmuted.
Dr. Newton said yes.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson, is he muted?
Or is he on? Does he know where to find the link? Maybe you should send the link to him.
I don't believe he's on.
Oh.
Darrell, perhaps you can send one to Martin, too?
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, so there's two, there's four, four ayes, two unavailable, motion passes.
Thank you. So now we move on to the students, staff, community recognitions, and then public comment. And the first up is the recognition for the Secretary of Education Scholars. And I assume Ms. Taylor Greene is on?
Yes, and now I'm unmuted, and we should have some slides. Okay, here we go. Thank you, Mrs. Thompson, and good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have the pleasure of honoring several members of the Red Clay family in what I believe is our first-ever virtual ceremony for school board recognitions. Many of our honorees are tuning in this evening with their friends and family, teachers, and school leaders, and we want to thank you all for being here. Our first recognition tonight is a group of 14 Red Clay seniors who have been selected as 2020 Delaware Secretary of Education Scholars by Secretary Bunting. Each year, Delaware Secretary of Education honors select students from the current graduating class for their exemplary work ethic, dedication, and accomplishments, both in and out of the classroom. These Secretary of Education Scholars maintain qualities critical to making a significant difference in their lives and also the lives of others. Students are chosen by their principals for their academic records and community service. I'm proud to introduce Red Clay's 2020 Secretary of Education Scholars in order of the school. Here we go. From Alexis Agupon High School, Talia Collier and Christian Rulon Crespo. From Cab Calloway School of the Arts, Sophia Block and Jessica Smith. From the Charter School of Wilmington, Anthony Lee and Alexander Zhu. From Conrad Schools of Science, Victoria Brown and Sofia Enriquez. From Delaware Military Academy, Julia Bachi and Olivia Ferris. From the John Dickinson School, Joshua Mortensen and Caitlin Robertson. And from Thomas McCain High School, Jean V. A. Green and Adrielle Rahmon. So on behalf of all of us from Red Clay, congratulations to these outstanding scholars, and best of luck in your next step. Our second recognition tonight is for Cook Elementary School, which has been named one of Delaware's 2020 Green Ribbon Schools for their commitment to sustainability and green initiatives. Congratulations to the following staff members who support the students' ECO team and lead green initiatives at the school. Principal Linda Ennis, Christine Zegda, who was the Green Team and ECO Team Lead, along with being a tag technology and enrichment teacher, Randy Stone, PE teacher, Marie Bada, ELL teacher, Ellie Quinn from the Guidance Department, Erin Mansfield, second grade teacher, Laura Thompson, technology and reading teacher, Virginia Sylvester, second grade teacher, and Heather Kennedy, kindergarten teacher. And also, and I believe we have many of these youngsters on the call tonight, we want to congratulate the following ECO warriors from the Cook ECO Team. Sean Atzerheimer, Brody Farmer, Ally Kuschkeva, Tyler Selden, Lillian Murray, Randall Weartunga, and Sasha Polenke. Congratulations to all of these dedicated ECO warriors. And if we can, we want to turn it over to Principal Ennis and Ms. Zegda, who are here with us, if they could say a few words? We need to unmute them.
Can you hear me now? Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us here tonight. I think we're all really excited to be here, and we really appreciate the time to recognize our work and to help us celebrate this effort. Wanted to take it up to thank a few people who helped us along the way. First of all, to the district, who has been so supportive every step of the way, from building maintenance, answering questions about, you know, the efficiency of our, the energy of our building, and nutritional services, picking houses where we can use boats instead of trays, and the Cook Community together. I think a big change like this doesn't happen without amazing leadership, and I think amazing leaders are people who allow the people around them to shine. So I have to thank Linda Ennis and Eric Mathis and Mrs. Brady, who was at Cook for many years, for allowing us to shine and being so open to our sometimes wild and disruptive ideas for teaching and for saying that. And I want to thank the parents at Cook for volunteering on field trips, picking trucks in their cafeteria with us, for his job on top, and to our teacher who has a one-star initiative with the Green Team, custodians and cafeteria staff. Change is, it's inconvenient, and kudos to them for rising to the challenge to be rolled over. But the big players in this, the Green Team, that you just introduced to, a team of teachers who volunteer like when the cafeteria develop health, teach lessons during related arts, start composting in second grade, and even a Cook garden. And the last group, but not least, is the heart of all this, what we were all supporting, were the students, ECO Team. Every year, because of their passion for this, they would work to identify issues in our school, research them, develop and implement action plans, and go back and check what they did to make a change. And I guess, even if we hadn't won this award, it's still like we won because we created this community of conscious children who are custodians of themselves and others on the earth, and we really, everyone who helped us with this, helped students see that they don't have to be adults to be changers, that their opinions and their actions matter now. And I think that's a lesson that will last a lifetime. So thank you to everyone, big or small, who helped us, who made a difference. And I think we're really looking forward to a bright, green, and hopeful future.
Thank you, Ms. Zegda. Taylor, Linda Ennis is not in the room, so you can proceed.
Okay, so that was beautiful. Thank you, Ms. Zegda, and that concludes our recognitions for tonight. Thank you all for joining us, and congratulations to all of our honorees tonight.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Very nice.
Okay, next we move on to public comment. As I mentioned before, we, the Board reserves up to 30 minutes at each board meeting for public comment, and we thank people for coming and commenting. Everyone gets up to three minutes to speak. Mr. Clements will roll a clock, so you'll be able to see what kind of time you have. And so the first up is Mr. Daniel Mitchell. Welcome, Mr. Mitchell.
I don't see his name in the list of participants.
Okay, so then we'll have to, if he's, if Mr. Mitchell is not on-
Yeah, he's not on.
He's not on, okay.
No.
So we'll restart the clock, and the next person up is Ms. Sarah Fulton. Welcome, Sarah.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Fulton. I am running this year for-
Three minutes, Sarah, excuse me, they have to reset the clock.
Oh, no.
Maria, can you reset the clock for three minutes so Sarah gets her three minutes? I'm sorry, Sarah.
Yep, go ahead.
My name is Sarah Fulton. I'm running this year for Red Clay School Board in District B. I'm a proud resident of the city of Wilmington. I'm a K-12 public school graduate and the daughter of a teacher. I'm running to advocate for students in this district, their families, who are navigating a complicated education system that has been even further complicated by COVID, and for the educators and staff members who are going above and beyond right now to meet the needs of the Red Clay community. The future is uncertain, but there is one thing that is crystal clear. The inequities that have always existed in this district are even clearer and more urgent during this pandemic, and we can't afford to let them go unaddressed. Despite our amazing educators, superintendent, principals, and assistant principals, food service workers, and school nurses, and the list goes on, who are fighting every day to continue to educate, feed, and provide resources to the community, there are still a lot of students who are getting left behind and falling through the cracks. This situation has exacerbated the stress, anxiety, and trauma of many of the students and their parents that they've already existed, and it's made clear the need for a more robust wraparound, you know, the need for more robust wraparound services in our schools. No one person could possibly have all of these solutions. It's going to take collaboration and innovation among our school leaders and our community members to rethink our education system in the context of this public health crisis and the impending economic recession that we're going to face. But the students in this district, their parents, our school staff, and community members deserve to have representation on the school board that will show up for them, listen to their concerns, and above all, like to lift up every one of the students in this district. While I have a minute left, I wanted to acknowledge some of the organizations and small businesses that are going above right now to provide for many Red Clay families here in my neighborhood. First of all, the organization One Side Growth Together is an awesome coalition of stakeholders, and they've been working to support working families, responders here in my neighborhood, and they've also got a small business relief fund that's doing a lot to help make ends meet for Red Clay families. Another organization that I want to acknowledge is, I'm sure many of you know that the guys at the Nerd It Now team, they were on Shark Tank and make Delaware proud for that. They have been doing a lot to close the digital divide right now and get devices into the hands of students who need them. So I'm proud to be a part of that team, and while there's a lot going on and a lot of challenges that we face, I remain optimistic because there are so many individuals in our community who are stepping up to support everyone and especially our students. So thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I look forward to connecting with those of you that I haven't gotten a chance to meet yet, and I hope that I can earn your vote on July 21st. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Sarah. Maria and Tony, can you please make sure that Dr. Bohm is unmuted, because I believe her screen is muted, and she needs to be unmuted. I'm sorry.
They just unmuted me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, good.
If everybody could just listen, if you have, if you are unmuted, please do not mute yourselves because we won't know. We have to look for you on the screen and unmute you, and we have to know.
Yeah, board members, you mean board members, Maria, so-
Yes, only board members because everybody else is muted.
Okay.
So please do not mute yourselves.
Very good.
Okay, so the next up is Ms. Jane Mitchell Werbridge. Welcome.
Yes, I was going to, I'll make a comment, and actually, I was going to defer my minutes, which I saw after I had sent in the information to request to speak, popped back and said you can't donate your time. I thought that you could donate your time to somebody else or defer your time, but it corrected and said you cannot do that. So that's what I was getting ready to do, so I have no comment.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then-
And if we could, please unmute Dr. Newton. Go ahead, President Thompson.
Okay, thank you, Minister Greene. So the next up for public comment is me. Good evening. My name is Kathy Thompson, and I am seeking reelection to the Red Clay School Board. I've been a member of the Board for the past 10 years and president for the last two. Last month, I spoke in public session about my 25-year-proven commitment to Red Clay and my unparalleled experience in and working for Red Clay. Tonight, I want to discuss what we've done over the past 10 years and what I plan to do going forward, should I be reelected. The job of a school board is simply stated. To set the direction of the district through policy and to hire a superintendent to carry that out, we have accomplished much over the past decade, of which I am most proud is the strategic plan, first adopted in 2012 and updated in 2017. It sets a clear focus for the district, and we are seeing an impact. The evidence shows that our students are growing, all students. All students can attend the neighborhood school or school of choice that they want to attend, even our students with disabilities. We have continued to create varying programs from which our students can choose. We have two excellent charters, magnets, and traditional schools, and we've added, we've added IB programs and dual enrollment programs, and we've increased our AP offerings. We have significantly increased our CTE programming, including those with certifications and business partnerships. Our scores always outshine the state. Red Clay has worked hard to ensure the safety and wellness of its staff and students in our schools. Our schools are secured. We have wellness centers in seven schools, two in elementary schools, and we feed our children to insured learning. We have a very diverse school district, and we are the first and only district in Delaware to hire an Equity and Diversity Officer to embrace that richness of diversity and to cascade it through. We've hired a superintendent, and we've worked hard to be very fiscally responsible and viable. We've run two successful referenda, one for capital expenditures. We built Cook and upgraded our schools like the auditorium in Cab, and we've managed to extend our operating referendum by over two years. We have clearly done a lot and made a lot of progress, and there is much more to do. We need to ensure that every child receives a comprehensive education that enables them to succeed in a constantly changing world. Over the next five years, I will focus on ensuring that every one of our students is growing and achieving academically, that the district has resourced our programs and our students sufficiently to meet the needs of all students.
25 seconds, Kathy.
That all students have equitable access to our offerings and that we are financially sound and robust, financially. I have a proven commitment and unparalleled experience with Red Clay. I speak out enough. I'm available and responsible to all. I hope that you will vote Kathy Thompson for Red Clay on now, July 21st. Thank you very much. Okay, so we move on to the approval of the minutes, and the first minutes that we need to approve are the minutes from the April 8th, 2020 Executive Session. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Mr. Matthews moves?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Casper seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Well, no, let's take a roll call vote, Maria. I'm sorry.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson is still having technical difficulty. Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Five yes, one unavailable, motion carries.
And now we move on to the regular, the April 8th, 2020 Regular Session. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the Regular Session?
So moved.
Dr. Bohm moves. Is there a second?
Second, this Matthew's.
Mr. Matthew's seconds, okay. So we will take a roll call vote in favor of approving the Regular Session minutes. So Maria, please.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson, still not available. Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Five yes, one no, motion carries.
Do we need to do anything to get Mr. Wilson on the phone or on the, on the audio?
Well, he's not contacted me.
He says he's on.
He says he's on?
He says he's on.
He is on. He's on and unmuted. I don't know why he's not, it's not coming up.
I don't see him.
He may need to call in.
It could be his volume on his device.
But he was, he was on an exact session.
He indicated he's on the meeting currently. You may need to check the audio, the volume on his computer.
Should I call him to get him onto the, to participate in audio?
I sent him a text just to see if he needed help with anything, so I'm waiting to hear back.
That would be great because I think we need to take, he needs to participate in our action items. Since he's trying to get on.
That's fine, Kathy. We can wait.
Are you, is everybody okay with that? I mean, I feel bad leaving him out because he is trying. Maybe Tony can keep us updated with what's going on.
Maybe he can get on via phone.
That's what I would suggest. I don't mind calling him, and then we can have him on, you know.
He's on the phone right now, and he says he can see everyone. He's just not able to communicate right now, so I'm, I'm in the middle of helping him.
Thank you, Tony.
Ed Abin texted him the phone number.
Okay, good.
This is Adriana. Is there any way we can do something else so all of the people participating aren't just sitting here doing nothing?
Well, I guess one thing we could do, if, if Mr. Greene wants to, is move his superintendent report up.
You want to make a motion to move it up in the agenda?
I make them, yes. I make a motion to move up Superintendent Greene's report.
That's Dr. Bohm. That's good. Is there a second?
Second.
That's Mr. Casper. Any discussion? Okay, Maria, take a vote, take a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Five yes, one no, motion carries.
Well, there was no no, Maria.
No, no. Who said no?
Oh, one not available. I'm sorry.
That's better. I was like, really? It was Adriana's thing.
I'm sorry, I just keep looking at Mr. Wilson, and I'm like, oh, he's still not on.
Superintendent Greene, you're on. Thank you so much for accommodating us.
No, no problem. I had hoped we had took the training wheels off our Zoom board meeting last month, but apparently they're still on. So thank you to members of the public and our staff who are bearing with us as we navigate again-
Okay.
-technical difficulties. And so hopefully, many of you, if not all, would recognize the gentleman who I had the fortune of being in this particular photo with on my cover. But for those of you who don't know, it's now the late Dr. Joseph E. Johnson, who I hope so- A hero.
I see.
In my eyes.
I see Kathy. Yeah, I'm waving.
You're on, Martin. Just, we moved everything so that Mr. Greene is presenting his superintendent report right now.
Thank you.
I'm tired. I waited for you. I'm sorry.
Don't put it on mute, Martin.
Yeah. Do not put it on mute, Martin. Leave it on, leave it alone.
Wilson, don't touch your computer at all. So on February 3rd, 2019, I had the fortune of being named Superintendent of the Red Clay Consolidated School District. And little did I know, a little, maybe six days after that, I had an opportunity to actually meet my hero before I knew he was my hero. So Dr. Joseph E. Johnson, Army veteran, civil rights activist, former superintendent of Red Clay, is the gentleman who is pictured here. Dr. Johnson was a graduate of the historic Howard High School. He earned his BS in Biology from Central State University, his Masters in School Administration from Seton Hall University, and his EDD, his doctorate from University of Massachusetts. He was selected by the Rockefeller Foundation to participate in the superintendence program and went on to serve his country as an officer in the US Army in the surface to air missiles, air missiles, excuse me, program, and later went on to teach- and later went on to teach science in Montclair, New Jersey before returning home here to Wilmington. Upon his return to Wilmington, Dr. Johnson became an educator and started his career at Warner Junior High School. In 1968, became the principal at P.S. Dupont High School. He went on to serve as the director of personnel before he was appointed superintendent of Wilmington Public Schools. He became the first superintendent of the Red Clay Consolidated School District in 1981 until he retired in 1990. And unfortunately, Dr. Johnson has recently passed. And as I assume this role as the current superintendent of Red Clay, knowing that I'm standing on the shoulders and have to carry forward his legacy, I'm humbled and privileged by that honor, and I thought it was only fitting this month to open and recognize Dr. Johnson for all of his efforts, not only in leading as the first superintendent of Red Clay, but what he's done for public education in the city of Wilmington and throughout the state of Delaware. As he led the state and the, in the city of Wilmington through the trying time of DSEG, it was very instrumental. And the fight that continues today in terms of equity and the various resources that we know are chosen and underserved and underrepresented communities need, but he embodied what's possible for our community based on, you see the diverse nature of the pictures that are shown here, but more importantly, the legacy and the work that he stood for. And again, the benefits that we're reaping today as a result of his efforts. So I think, you know, Dr. Johnson and his family, may he rest in peace. And again, I think he's fitting. And for those of you who would like to learn more about Dr. Johnson, you can watch the tribute on their TV and YouTube and also on Wilmington Channel 22. So we did put those resources up for you to go learn more about the legacy of Dr. Joseph E. Johnson. And if you couldn't see actually in that picture, if you can go back, please. On the chalkboard, you actually see respect for cafeteria people, so that's a nice transition. You know, he had that on that chalkboard to those students in that tight right picture. And we have respect for our school nutrition staff because they continue to be Red Clay heroes as they continue to deliver over 200,000 meals to date during this school closure period. They've been on the front line since day one, and again, we can't thank them enough. We thank all of our teachers and educators who also continue to come out to support and volunteer as well as our transportation department as they continue to provide resources to our community at 20 different sites. We also, as it relates to remote learning, we published a handy guide for our students, our staff and our community called the Red Clay Remote Learning Plan, which covers all the topics from around attendance to grading to help condense and put everything that we released throughout this period of time of school closure into one consistent document. You can get special education information, also interpretation services for families, and also mental health resources can be found in that guide. Also understanding the impact that school closures are having on families who are still seeking the opportunities to register their children. We have taken our registration processes online, making packets available for registration materials. So you can actually go on redclayschools.com to get additional information as it relates to that registration process. We continue to look for ways to streamline and support families with online registration as we continue to endure and go through. If you go to that site for our families in our community, there are registration packages. You can actually provide or drop those packets off at our locations, which are Balt's, Brandywine Springs, Lewis, Richardson Park, or at Warner, we are receiving those registrations, and we will continue again to look at online options to support our families who are looking to register students here. Just a couple celebratory items. We had the opportunity last week to celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week. So thank you again to all of the educators who are here. We know you've endured so much, but it was fitting. And thank you to Mr. Golda, Dr. Grundy, and Taylor Green, our Chief Communications Officer, for facilitating and putting together this wonderful event with all of the Teachers of the Year from our respective schools throughout the district. And so we, we asked, and last week, all of our students, staff and families joined, and I love Delaware teachers. And also thank our school nurses during Teacher Appreciation Week last week and National Nurse Week. We hosted a Zoom event, and this event actually was, was, was fun. I learned a lot. And so first I'm going to elevate our four finalists, and they are Mr. Andrew Bedell, who was a Cab Calloway School teacher, Kaziah Finney, H.B. Dupont Middle School, Ms. Michelle Scott from North Star Elementary, and Ms. Kimberly Stock at McCain High School. They are the four Teacher of the Year finalists, and we will be announcing the district teacher of the year winner on May 28th. And we want to thank all of the Teachers of the Year. And, you know, as we continue to go through this, this process of remote learning and really looking at the creativity and innovation of our staff members and as they facilitated the discussions and conversations and asking them questions about, you know, what they love most about their students, but also what they miss, some consistent trends from each of them unprompted where, you know, our students desire to learn, the grit and perseverance that our students demonstrate, and then more importantly, the humor, the humor that, you know, while we are still connecting via Zoom and remotely, that physical connection and what our students and educators engage in on a traditional basis is definitely being missed during this period of time. And so I thank all of our Teachers of the Year for their willingness to share feedback and information with us. They talk to discuss ways in which they're staying connected with their students. And obviously, I know we all, and it's becoming somewhat cliche that we're zoomed out. And interesting enough, whether it was Mr. Quigg from AI Middle School discussing how he uses and has introduced Google Drive into his technology repertoire and, and as a means of staying connected. Ms. Scott from North Star indicated, you know, she uses the traditional mail and is mailing, you know, letters and, and things out to her students. And what an excitement, I remember being young and getting my first piece of mail, and it's always an exciting point. So, you know, also, you know, just a traditional phone call, having that one-on-one opportunity to stay connected is what our Teachers of the Year indicate that they're seeing most impact for in terms of staying connected. So thank you to all of our respected Teachers of the Year. Thank you for all you do and all you've done. You're deserving of the recognition, and that's just a highlight again to all of the wonderful educators throughout Red Clay. As another means of keeping our community and staff connected, we launched out our communications department, the Inside Red Clay Newsletter, again, which gives highlights and resources and information and developments in our COVID-19 response, any important updates regarding health, benefits, tips for teaching from home, self-care resources, and inspiring TED Talks to help brighten everyone's day. Next slide, please. And we are in the midst of, one of our priorities here in Red Clay has been elevating student voice. And we've joined with the Mikvah Challenge, we started that last year. And although schools are closed, we're continuing to do that virtually. We have two days remaining. Actually, you can go on today and get some additional information, but Newcastle County Virtual Project Soapbox. This is an opportunity for our students to elevate things that they're passionate about. And it's, it's on Facebook, and currently we have students talking about mental health issues during COVID-19, teen suicide and depression, plastic waste, childhood obesity, school lunches. And they're elevating these conversations in their speeches and their pitches, and they're very passionate about it. So please go on if you have the opportunity to support our students who are taking the time to elevate these issues that they care most about and sharing that. And again, this is all a part of our raising our young people and elevating student voice throughout Red Clay. And we're fortunate, and thank you to Ms. Holly Golda and all of our secondary schools, middle and high schools who have students participating in this wonderful activity. As we know, with, with most things during this, this unprecedented time, that there are struggles and challenges and adjustments that we all have to make and sacrifices that we have to make. And, you know, while we want to bring and wish we could bring all of our graduating classes together, we're in this virtual world, and so we will have Red Clay Graduation Week, the week of June through the 16th. We have seven different ceremonies respectively that will be celebrated. Each of our schools will have their own dedicated day during that week. Leading up to that, we will continue to do, you know, yard signs, senior shout-outs, senior showcases. Thank you to all of our schools, our educators who have been elevating our senior class, the class of 2020 during these unfortunate times. But we're going to continue to do our best to honor them with dignity, understanding that we are still in, in the midst of a health crisis and unfortunately unable to come together and convene in the traditional sense of a ceremony. We also want to acknowledge our very own, Ms. Equada Jones, Assistant Principal at Highlands Elementary. Dr. Jones was indicated or announced as the Delaware Academy School Principals Assistant Principal of the Year. So congratulations to her again for that wonderful distinction and wonderful honor. And it's, it's a feather in our cap to have the Delaware Outstanding Assistant Principal of the Year within our own ranks. So congratulations again to Equada for that acknowledgement and that accomplishment. As we continue to engage and inform our processes, again, we continue to engage and work with our families. So on May 4th, the Red Clay Parent Advisory Committee met, and that is facilitated and supported by our Federal Programs Department. Ms. Tiffany Shockley, who is a McCain parent, is the president, and we appreciate her leadership from the parent perspective. And this was an opportunity to provide updates, but also hear feedback from what our families are actually dealing with so that we can again have a comprehensive approach as we try to provide remote learning supports. We also know our families are dealing with so many other pressures, whether that would be economic pressures, concerns about, you know, health, wellness and safety. And then more importantly, the dynamics of trying to work from home, but also support the students from remote learning. And it's a learning experience for all of us. And on the 12th, actually yesterday, I had the opportunity to engage with family representatives from each of our schools with the Superintendent's Parent Advisory Council, and, you know, just to hear their testimonies. And I tell you, I'm humbled by the level of commitment and support that we have from our families, the grace again that they continue to show us as we learn, in many instances on the fly, as we make adjustments to do our best to support our families. And they had nothing but acknowledgements and, and positive things to say about what our educators are doing, the creativity that they're seeing and the means of staying engaged. While we have a lot of work to do, to hear our parent perspectives in terms of what they're dealing with, you know, some working from home while also trying to support, others have lost their jobs or may have been furloughed or laid off. And so again, this is a complex situation where we've provided educational responses to the learning environment. However, we know many of our families are dealing with other repercussions as it relates to COVID-19. And I just thank our parents for being so open and sharing resources and ideas with each other, parents of how they're managing and. But more importantly, informing us as a district in ways in which we can approve. Which leads me to, to share some information on our school closure, closure survey that we had put out to the community. That survey was open in April 24th through May 4th. We provided surveys in both English and Spanish in the four major areas where student academic needs, wellness, the social emotional need, resources and support, and communication. We had over 2,100 responses that included 1,242 parent responses. Parents could respond if they had multiple children in our district multiple times to the survey. So that was 993 individual parent responses, 60 district level staff participated, 557 building level, school level staff, and then 302 students between the grades of fourth through 12th grade. And so some themes that came out of it. From a parent perspective, we had 681 additional comments were received. In addition to well over half of our, reading the district response is very effective or extremely effective. The majority of our staff and our community felt well informed. Again, while there continues to always be, you know, open channels to communication and improved communication. You know, overall, again, the majority of respondents felt that they were communicated effectively with. They also felt that the teachers are being responsive. Students questioned the school, questions related to online versus offline materials. And there's some themes, some general themes that came out of that survey that's helping inform our decision-making moving forward. There is a desire to have more frequent Zoom meetings or classes from parents, the desire to learn new learning or comments on current learning plans. There was a desire for greater work and responsibility for work completion. We heard that also during the Parent Advisory Council, just in terms, especially at the secondary level. At home myself, so it's hard to get them motivated when they think that the physical construct of schools are no longer. There was also concern for social emotional health for our children. And again, that's what the one thing that we know we're experiencing the most during this time of, you know, stay-at-home orders is that idea of, you know, the connection between peers and the supports that a lot of our families are seeking. From our staff, our student comments, they were concerned actually about their fellow students' social emotional health. And that was also something that came out of the Teachers of the Year convening where they talked about how caring that our students were. And then there was requests for more consistency amongst teachers, requests for more clarity on school schedules and organization of classes. And the students had a desire for opportunities to connect with classmates. And their other concern was concern for fairness for the next grade level. And they're not alone, obviously, in that concern. Again, this information will help us inform our decision-making moving forward, depending on the outcome of our ability to provide supports over the summer and then more importantly, going into next year. And then our staff comments, there were 224 comments received, and some themes that we received from our staff were concerns for students' social emotional health, again, concerns for equity for students without, you know, various resources, requests for understanding for teacher learning curve with remote learning, and then expressed the challenges with supplementing the work that the district had helped support and put together. And then there was a lot of expressing of gratitude and compliment efforts for our staff. And again, we're, we're all in this together as a district. Again, I can't thank our community enough to, the support that we receive both in the district and outside of the district. We're in close contact with our legislative community, with our congressional members, with our nonprofit sector, and we're going to look to increase that involvement moving forward as we phase through, you know, closing out this phase of remote learning and going into our summer months and ultimately looking at what this reopening looked like for Red Clay. So that concludes my report. Again, thank you to all of our educators, all of our building leaders. And I will turn it back over to you, Madam Secretary, I mean, Madam President, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Are there any questions to Mr. Green, board members?
No, but this is Jose Matthews. I just wanted to comment, thank you, Darrell, for your presentation. I really appreciate your introduction and the service that Dr. Johnson has provided, not only to our community and for the time that he's been at Red Clay, but for the generations that followed him. And so I really appreciate you honoring that, that aspect of, of our history at Red Clay. And that's something I really appreciate and would like maybe to see more often. I think it was just definitely a really nice, well-done update, and I have a great appreciation for that. And just your report in general, which is really well done, and the efforts that we're all doing at the community is just really inspiring. So thank you for that, Darrell.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, I would like to say thank you for all the, the graduation signs. I think it's wonderful that we're honoring our seniors in this very, very difficult graduation period. But it's really nice to see the signs, and I know from Facebook posts and things like that, that the students are just thrilled to be recognized. And so thank you to the staff for delivering them and for honoring our seniors and making them feel very special. All right, so we'll go back to action items. And the first item that we have is the confidential staffing report. I understand that rather than voting on this as one report, there is a desire to vote on it item by item. And to do that, we will need a motion to not vote on the confidential staffing report as a whole, but rather to vote on the individual items in the staffing report under title, under letters A through M. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
That's Mr. Matthews. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilson, seconds. Any discussion? Okay, if not, Maria will take a roll call vote as to whether or not we will break down the staffing report. We won't put on the staffing report as a whole, but rather break it down into sections A through M.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
No.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Ms. Thompson?
No.
So that's two yes or no, motion fails.
Okay, so then we're going to take, it is the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approved the confidential staffing report as discussed in executive session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
That's Dr. Newton, is there a second?
So moved.
That's Mr. Wilson, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Maria, we're ready to take a-
Faith, Kathy, I do-
Okay, sorry, Jose. If I could see the board here, then I would know if somebody has something to say.
No worries, thank you. So for the record, I just want to mention that I believe that my right to vote on individual items, I think is very wrong. And I think that this board is definitely making a mistake with not allowing board members to be able to have their voices put on the table and on the record. And I find it to be, I just, I just think that we're really making a wrong decision here. So I want that to be on the record, thank you.
And this is Adriana, I would like it to go on the record as well. I mean, the motion that was made was for us to be able to vote on individual recommendations. And not allowing that to occur means that we have to vote yes or no on every recommendation, which doesn't allow people to vote individually. And I think that's problematic because it's an attempt to silence voices.
So I would like-
And on this board, I will say this, and on this board, we know whose voices are constantly attempted to be silenced.
Thank you, Dr. Bone, for your comments. I just want the record to reflect that I do feel that my vote was being, is being suppressed in this item.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we're ready to take a roll, a roll call vote then, Maria.
Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
No.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Five yes, one no, motion carries.
Thank you, Maria. So then we move on to the District Financial Position Report. It is the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approved the District Financial Position Report as submitted. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Casper moves, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Matthews, seconds. And then discussion. I frankly think it would be worthwhile to have Jill explain this so that people understand it. We went through it at the CFRC last night, but it may be worthwhile to have Ms. Florrie explain it to make sure everybody is understanding what it means.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. So the District Financial Position Report is based on financial information through March 31st, but it's a projection of what our June 30th ending balance will be, which is important because we need a sufficient balance. Taxes aren't received, the due date isn't until September 30th for the next year. And certainly we're in uncertain times right now. But this is a standard report, this is a report that we produce every year. And we produce it at multiple points in the fiscal year. So looking forward, June 30th obviously is not that far away. So our balance doesn't significantly change. The final budget had us ending at $16.1 million. This changes that slightly and that is due to COVID, quite honestly. Our balance increases, it's now $16.6 million. And that, the increase is certainly not from budget cuts, but the increase is based on, number one, our school buildings are closed. So having orders, having the daily operations of, you know, all 16,000 students attending is, is not happening. And so there's certainly some, you know, purchases that aren't happening as well as we've, you know, we've maintained our salaries for staff, but there are some hourly staff support that, you know, it's not regular full-time employees, but it might be a lunch monitor where there's nothing to provide during, during the hours that the kids aren't in school. So our projecting end balance is $16.56 million, which is sufficient. The, what the report asks for is to track that against one month of payroll and our projected one month of payroll, and that's local payroll, not total, is $4.7 million. But generally, what we need is about $14 million to get us through that next year.
Jill, I think froze. You there, Jill?
I can't hear anything.
Taxes, or I should say property tax payments through the fall. But this, this report, as of this time, has us slightly ahead of our projected ending balance.
Yeah, it was great news last night, Jill, so thank you. Are there any questions for Jill?
Jill, when do you think we might have to go out for a referendum again?
I think it's too early to tell. I think in large part, we have to see what's going to happen at the federal level, whether or not there are cuts there and at the state level. So if, without those factors, I would say it would be at least a couple of years. But with those factors, that could, that could change that. And the reason why it would change it is because if we use local funds to, you know, make up for state cuts, it's all in how the board sets the budget. So there's so many variables right now, it's just, it's really uncertain to say. But I, we're not immediately facing it.
But best case, we don't go out for a few years, worst case would be what?
Worst case would be, we would go next year for the following year. But that's worst case and that's not something I honestly see happening. But I, you know, right now, nobody can say, right now, nobody can say anything for sure.
Thank you.
And Jill, this is Jose, I have a question. Can, can we have a little bit of information as to how our district's going to be impacted financially with the reassessment ruling that was just recently rolled out? Could, is, do we have that information yet? How we're going to be impacted?
I can tell you, I sit on the County Finance Committee.
Yes, yes.
It came up in the discussion, we had a meeting just this week. And the, we had a meeting just this week and the conversation is, number one, the remedy and the process to do it is going to take a long time.
Yes.
But, and so their projections were, you know, significantly in years out. But that'll have to work through the availability remotely of working through that. I mean, there's certainly a deadline within the judge's order to start that. But I have no timeline for sure. And what the county told us on Wednesday was that it would, it would be multiple years.
Wow.
Thank you.
Jill told us that at the CFRC and I think that might be a very elongated time period because the judge gave the parties five days to come back with information regarding the remedies. And he recognized that it could take some time, but I don't know if he's talking about the same time period that the county-
Well, and I, you know, I certainly don't know if they're speaking about the appeal process either, which is also lengthy.
Right, right, if there's an appeal.
Right.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Jill.
Welcome.
So I think we're ready to take a vote, Maria, on this motion to approve the financial position report.
Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Okay, so the next item is, is the, an administrative recommendation for principal. It's the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approved Noreen La Sorsa as the principal of Skyline Middle School, effective July 1, 2020, as submitted. Is there a motion?
So moved.
That's Mr. Wilson moving, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Casper, seconds. Is there discussion?
Yes, there is some discussion.
Go ahead, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. So because I have ethics and morals, I'm going to be abstaining from this vote. But I do want the record to reflect that I do believe that the hiring process for principals needs to be much more transparent before a final vote. And I think we need to include public forums in our process where we engage community members, where we can come and engage with the candidate. And I also believe that there were several, several conflicts of interest with, involved within this process. And I would also like to see a much more diverse representation of parents on the committees during the selections of principals. So I, I, again, am going to abstain, but I wanted my comments and discussion to be on the record.
Any other, any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Okay, hearing none, we're ready for a vote, Maria.
Dr. Bone?
No.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews abstain? Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Four yes, one abstain? One, oh no, I'm sorry, three yes?
No, it's four, Maria.
Four yes, one abstain, one no, motion carries.
Thank you. Ms. La Sorsa, if you're on, welcome to the team.
She's not.
All right. Okay, then, we move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda, to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Who was that?
Faith.
Matthews.
Dr. Newton, that was Dr. Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Bone, second? Any discuss, well, no discussion on this, we're ready for a vote, Maria.
Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, six yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Maria.
Welcome.
Now we get to items submitted by the board. Are there board members with comments? Could you let me know and then we'll order who goes first?
I have a short one.
Is that Martin, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson is on, who else has them?
I do.
Dr. Bone does and Mr. Matthews does?
Yes.
And I do. So I don't really care who goes first, if anybody really want, does anybody-
I'll go first, I don't care.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Mine is short and sweet. It's about the superintendent report about Dr. Johnson. Dr. Johnson was my high school principal and my wife's high school principal. He was a great friend of mine and yes, he would, will be missed. Great man, great job, job he did when it became Red Clay. But he was an awesome principal for P.S. Dupont High School dynamiters. That's all I have to say.
You look like a dynamiter, Martin.
I agree.
Okay, thank you. And I mean, I'm happy to go next unless somebody wants to, because I went last, last time.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll go now. I wanted to talk about, I attended the DSBA Board of Directors meeting via Zoom with, with Jason, we both attended. It was on May 6th, it was a very good meeting. The DSBA finances are sound and they will slight, they will be reducing slightly our dues on the upcoming year. The Legislative Committee meeting for the DSBA was canceled as the legislature is not meeting due to COVID, although they are supposed to be resuming activities electronically to cover the budget only. And Mike Jackson committed to keeping school budgets whole, so we'll, we will see what happens. Tentatively, they approved the meeting dates for 2020 to 2021. I did not, after, after we got the Red Clay dates, I didn't see any on-flick. We talked, that, our meeting was held before the lawsuit was, was decided. So we got an update, but that's kind of out of, out of, doesn't matter right now because the lawsuit, you know, the decision came down. They asked about whether we have considered the use of our buildings by outside groups when school open, when schools do open. It's a fair question, but I didn't really, I didn't really have that. I don't really have anything to say about that, it's just a question for Dr. Ammon and team. As to the National School Board Association, the State of California School Board Association is dropping out of the NSBA, even though the school districts in California want to remain a part of it. So for some reason that we all kind of guessed at, the NSBA, the NSBA annual meeting is being moved from San Diego to New Orleans this year. The chiefs were meeting the following day and we always get a really good update from Kevin Fitzgerald, who is the chief's representative on the DSBA. I know Susan Bunting was going to attend and they were seeking guidance on school openings next year. They, we've been told apparently that each individual school board's calendar is sacrosanct. And so nobody is going to mess around with start dates or anything else on the calendars because some districts start after Labor Day and some will stop. They were seeking guidance on graduations and I'm, I'm certain that Mr. Green has gotten it. It's being worked into our plan. They mentioned the fact that we do need a budget by June 30th, so the legislature has to come back and act on that. And the deadlines for the certificate, the CN, the Certificate of Necessities is still August 31st and is not being waived. Drivers Ed, which I'm sure Jason could do much better than I, we really want help on that because they really need a blueprint for what to do with the students. There's a big backlog. The DMV is not processing blue slips and there's a backlog of students. So perhaps Drivers Ed's teachers will be in high demand next year. They were also seeking summer scholarships and they didn't really think the governor's office was thinking about a lot of, a lot of things were not on the governor's radar. They talked about the CARES Act money and how it could be used. Jill talked about that last night in the CFRC as well. They're looking to cover connectivity, connectivity statewide, which is a huge problem for remote instruction. Some of the money may need to go to private schools. We need input on how to do the September 30 count, especially if school is not in session or it's only part-time. And a lot, a lot is not on the governor's radar screen. But with the CARES money, the state gets $33 million. The districts are going to get $39 million and I think we get, if I remember that number correctly, from Jill.
That is correct.
Yeah. So I also attended the Reading Consortium meeting on May 7th via Zoom and Mr. Green was on the, was on the Zoom meeting as well. It was the first full consortium meeting since February, obviously it was by Zoom or the last one was in person. The redistricting subcommittee passed two motions. One was to review the timeline for redistricting, to bring a proposal back to the full consortium, and that passed. And the other was in essence to reconstitute the redistricting subcommittee, to have the CFOs replace the superintendents so that they could review and focus on the funding that was needed relating to redistrict.
President Thompson, just to be clear, that was to have the CFOs join for superintendent hold, anyone who had to make the clarification that the CFO will be in addition to the superintendent on that redistricting committee.
Okay, so we'll have both of you on there, that'll be good. We'll get double the bang for the buck, which will be really, which will be really good because the redistricting thing- which will be really good because the redistricting thing, and it seems like we are definitely moving forward. So redistricting is kind of shifting its focus to funding at this point of the various plans. And they did commit to take into account all of the work that was done on WIEC because there was obviously a substantial price tag to that and a lot of work that went into it. The educators' work group is focused on strengthening teacher pipeline, seeking any diverse candidates. And they made a motion to come up with a new kind of timeline as well, which passed. We then discussed equity issues arising due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the relief funds that the state was receiving. One was the general education emergency relief fund, which is GEAR, $7.9 million. And the other was the one I just mentioned, the elementary and secondary emergency relief fund, $16 million. And I told you the amount that we're getting. It can go to COVID-related activities. Everybody is planning to return to school and we're hoping it's going to be better with use of technology in classrooms and will be better prepared, but we shall see. There's really a return to school in three buckets, quality of material and instruction, health and wellness, governance and operations. And at Reading, wanted to know what the rollout would look like and how they can play a part in it. Everyone spoke highly of Maryland's Kerwin Commission report, a great plan for education, but unfortunately Maryland was unable to fund it. Then I attended the CFRC meeting last night with Jill and many others. We're in a good place financially. We're in as good a place financially as we can be at this, as a district. Revenues are at 98% and expenses at 77%, which is a good place to be where you're, you're taking in more than you're going out. So that's good. We are notating all expenses related to COVID-19 so that we will know what those monies were for stimulus and other reports. Finances, as Jill mentioned, are kind of up in the air nationally and state. COVID, everyone expects Governor Carney's recommended budget to be revised, but of course, we don't have that. Uncertainty in finances seems to abound. DFAC, the state hasn't a budget yet, so they have to get one in place. DFAC will meet on the 21st. Budget needs to be in place by 6:30. I highly commend and thank the Red Clay Finance Office for ensuring that the multitude of paperwork has been done and completed to keep us right on track and keeping all of our finances in place. So thank you Jill, Stephanie, Laura, and the entire team. And then we, at a prior board meeting, we all agreed verbally that Jose could be, could join as the Red Clay representative on the CAB fund board. We need to take a firm, you know, a vote on that according to the CAB guidelines. So we ought to, I'm going to make a motion that Jose be appointed the Red Clay representative on the CAB fund board. And that's from Kathy Thompson.
And I'll second it.
Martin seconds it. Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Maria, will you please take a roll call vote? Maria?
I needed to unmute myself.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
I don't want to vote on my own appointment, so I'll abstain. Thank you.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Five yes, one abstain, motion carries.
Great, thank you. And thank you for being willing to serve Jose. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And lastly, I have to again thank everybody in the, in the district staff. I know it's been a crazy time, but we get to see everything that's going on and we are very thankful from Superintendent Green to full staff, to all the educators, to the therapists and the nutrition workers and the bus drivers and the custodians and absolutely everybody on the Red Clay staff that is doing a phenomenal job in helping us get through this. So thank you. Dr. Bone or Mr. and Mr. Matthews, you can decide who is next.
Jose, you can go hon.
Perfect. Thank you. Well, good evening, everybody. I hope all is well. I hope everyone is faring well through this. And I know that we are in some pretty challenging times. I know that we have really, as a district, I think, out of all of this, out of all of the moving parts that we're seeing here, I think we've, you know, really have highlighted our ability to come together and our ability to make decisions with, you know, with agility and, you know, really just making sure that we're meeting the needs of our students and keeping it moving. And I, as a board member, and I, I'm sure the rest of my colleagues would agree, appreciate your efforts more than you would know. And it just really means a lot to make sure that we're continuing to educate our children despite all of the challenges that we're, that we're seeing currently. So I also just want to give a special shout out to Jessica Terranova and her team. Feeding our children, it's definitely such a priority for me and I think for, obviously, very apparently for our district as well. And I couldn't say enough for the thanks of all the meals that are served and making sure that our children don't go hungry. I don't think that I can even comprehend to, to even understand or digest how big of an accomplishment this really is because when I compare, you know, to what other districts are doing, they, they're really struggling with meeting that need and we have done that with such grace. I have been just thoroughly impressed. So thank you so much again for all of, for all of the work that we're doing here. And so with that, I want to highlight a lot of the innovation that our district is doing. I think that in comparison to districts across the state and nationally, and again, I reference that we, Red Clay, I do feel sits on a national platform. And I think that when we think of our school district, it's not just within the state, but nationally, I think we have been so incredibly innovative and given all of the recent challenges that we've seen lately, we have to start thinking about a path forward. And so I really do want to ask our administrators to, you know, really think outside the box. And I've seen some really neat innovation this year and I want to continue that for next year, particularly because it's going to bring some new challenges with, you know, the fact that whatever we knew prior to March 1st in terms of educating our children, it's, our world of education has drastically changed. And the fact is, we aren't going back. There's just, I think that that's been really tough for me to accept. I think it's been tough for a lot of people to accept. But I think the reality is we, we aren't going back to that world. And one thing that I really want to maybe think about and maybe some of my colleagues can think about and maybe we can have further discussion on this is an enhancement of our online learning. So as we continue to utilize the online platforms, maybe creating a little bit more utilization of what we have and the tools and the resources that we have. Come this fall, I know that there are a number of universities that have, and schools and education systems that have announced that they are not going to be allowing students to come back to campus. We can't see that far out into the future. We do not know what, what holds for us here in Red Clay just yet. But I do want us to be thinking ahead and really thinking innovatively about what we can do should that happen. And I, and again, I just want to thank everyone for their efforts. And perhaps we can look at maybe even creating an online academy or, you know, just really thinking outside the box to address some of the really challenging issues that we face. So thank you again, and that is all I have. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And then Dr. Bone, you're up.
So I was so pleased that Superintendent Green began his presentation by honoring Dr. Johnson. So thank you Superintendent. I met Dr. Johnson when I was 11 years old and I was playing in the street on 21st and Jefferson. And I remember my shoes were dirty and he was in the street as well, talking to Ms. Karen Denton and my parents and some other people. And he came over to me and I remember him asking me what my name was and where I went to school. And we just chatted and when he started to come over to me, I actually thought he was going to yell at me and tell me to get out of the street and stop playing in the street because it was dangerous. And I didn't have any idea who he was and I think I was 11 at the time. And I saw him over the next few years in lots and lots of different places, but I didn't, and every time I saw him, he would always come up to me. He would always speak to me. He'd always ask me questions. And I don't think I was, it wasn't until I was a teenager that I realized who he was and how important he was in our community, in our district. I just knew him as some guy I would see who always said hi and talked to me. So when I think of Dr. Johnson, I think of him as kind, caring, interested and committed to our students and our community. And I want to give one very specific example that doesn't have to do with me. In 1977, Dr. Johnson testified in federal court arguing that the Wilmington School District had not been racially desegregated enough under the Brown decision. He said that racially identifiable black schools in Wilmington were something he felt very strongly about. And therefore he became involved in creating a two-way busing system to desegregate our schools. Dr. Johnson firmly believed that busing should be a two-way road and that black children should not be the only students bused. His position was that white students should also be bused into Wilmington. I think that one way to honor Dr. Johnson's legacy is to continue to fight against racially identifiable and segregated schools, which we have many of in Red Clay today, and also to fight for equity for all of our students, especially those who have been historically marginalized by factors such as race and class. So Dr. Johnson, I hope you know that you are loved and you are very important. You are important historically. You're important in our path forward and may you rest in peace. Thank you.
Good morning, Johnson.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you, everybody. And I think it's ready, ready for a motion to adjourn. But before that, I really wanted to thank Maria and Tony who are in the background and really helping to run our meetings really very smoothly, our Zoom meetings. So thank you both. I failed to mention that last month. And I really need, I really want to thank you for all you're doing to help our board meetings be smooth and for Tony getting us online when we need to be online.
Thank you Kathy. A pleasure.
We're remote next month. Once we get you set up, don't touch that computer.
I may be trading it in.
We have a tech department.
So with that, I'll have, is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Dr. Newton moved and is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Bone seconded. Any discussion? I can't believe it. Okay. We will not do a roll call on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all very much. We look forward to, we thank you for being here and we appreciate you participating in our meeting and thank you board.
All right. Stay safe everybody. Stay safe.
Bye-bye.